To order the special joint meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee and NRHS School Building Committee at 7:01 PM. The purpose of this first meeting, this is meeting number one. Meeting number two will come later, which has more business, but meeting number one's purpose is discussion and potential approval of the project schematic design and the schematic report submission to the MSBA. And so I'd like to turn it over to our chairman of the SBC Subcommittee to give the District Committee a little bit of background on this topic, and then we will open it up for discussion after we receive a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For those members of the District Committee that were not in attendance at our just concluded two meetings, the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee just voted unanimously to recommend the much-vetted, much-presented, much-reviewed schematic design for the new Nishoba Regional High School. The purpose of this meeting this evening is to, for the District Committee then, to vote on a recommendation of the Building Committee for submission of this schematic design along with our project budget to the Mass School Building Authority. Our deadline for submission is June 27th. And once that is submitted, we have until the 2nd of August, where we will then have our dead exclusion vote, and after which it goes to the voters. Ms. Williams and Ms. Nguyen from our owner's project manager here, they can speak more to any of the specifics of the schematic design. So I would turn it over to Ms. Williams and Ms. Nguyen for anything they would like to add at this point in regards to the schematic design that we're asking the District Committee to approve this evening.
Yes, thank you, Jim. What I would like to say is, I'm not sure how many people were part of the last meeting or not, so at the risk of being redundant for those that might not have been there. We have been working, developing the submission over the last several months, almost a year. And the submission is really a report of all the activities that have taken place and all of the information that has been vetted and developed and shared with the community, either through school building committee meetings, with the working group, in public forums, etc. So we are, we are at what you would call the conclusion of Module Three and Four of the feasibility study and schematic design. And we are, with the approval of this group, prepared to submit to the Mass School Building Authority so that we can move to the next step, which would be a project scope and budget conference with the MSBA and board approval from the Mass School Building Authority on August 30th. And then at that point in time, it would then, we would be able to proceed with local approval, meaning you know, the town meetings and local debt exclusion vote. So this is, this has been a two-year journey, and certainly a lot of people have worked very hard on this process from the community, in the school, and the leadership of both of these committees. So I invite you to ask any questions that we may not have answered along the way that we can.
Madam Chairman, before you open it up to the other members, I would like to ask Ms. Williams and Ms. Nguyen if they wouldn't mind just touching base a little bit on, which is basically the next phase of the task of the Building Committee, which is the retention of a construction manager. That is something that's going to be effectuated during the summer. Ms. Nguyen has been assiduous in her scheduling of meetings in this regard. So I'd just like, if you wouldn't mind with your permission, Madam Chair, if Ms. Williams and Ms. Nguyen could just simply touch base a little bit on the interview process and hiring of a construction manager.
Please.
Okay, thank you. So we're in the process. We have written what they call a request for qualifications for construction management at-risk services. It's a two-step process. We're seeking approval. Let me back up. What we're looking to do is really confirm and invite others to submit on the project. And so part of this process is to pre-qualify construction management firms, make sure that they meet the mandatory requirements by statute, that they're able to bond the project, that they're DCAM certified, that they've performed this type of work, as well as scale of work. And then, once we receive their responses, the the CM at-risk Subcommittee will meet shortly after the statements of qualifications are submitted, and we will fully vet those qualifications to make sure that they are fully responsive and checking references. At that point, the Subcommittee will come back and share with the School Building Committee at their July meeting, July 20th meeting, their recommendations for construction management firms to deem to be pre-qualified and be invited to the second phase of the selection process. We would then send out requests for services. We would receive a technical response as well as a pricing response from them, and we would, again, go through the process of reviewing them, reviewing those proposals. Once we deem, in the first step of the process, that somebody is qualified or not qualified, then the assumption is, assuming that their response to the RFP is fully responsive and that they didn't make any errors in terms of required documentation to be submitted, then they would be invited to interview in September. And we have developed this strategy and schedule, whereas we would anticipate that interviewing construction managers on September 8th would allow us some opportunity to have discussions and negotiations over fee proposal and also contracts, so that assuming, whenever the vote would be in September, and approvals would be there, we would be ready to execute a contract with the construction manager, and also with that approved vote, execute an amendment to the contractor, contracts for the OPM and the design team. And it would allow us to really hit the ground running in late September to address what we see as the challenges, some of the market conditions, and in particular, we were talking about geothermal and the availability of drillers. So it's a quick-moving schedule, but it allows us great flexibility here to hedge against inflation or a potential delay in the project.
All right. So I think that that pretty much covers what you wanted her to cover, Joe, yeah?
Yes, just one correction. Recurring theme of our Building Committee is such that all plans are subject to change, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have moved the July 21st meeting to August 2nd on the dead exclusion vote, so. I think Ms. Nguyen indicated that we have a meeting in July. We've moved that to August 2nd, so.
I apologize.
No, you don't need to ever apologize to me, Ms. Williams.
I was referring to the School Building Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Then I apologize to you.
Okay.
So many meetings. Okay, everybody. So, Joe, I think we're ready for a motion. Do you agree?
I would concur, Madam Chair. I move to adopt and approve the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee's recommendation of the approval of the schematic design and its attendant schematic report, and to further accept the recommendation of the Nishoba Regional School District Committee, excuse me, the Nishoba Regional School District School Building Committee to authorize Skansky USA, the owner's project manager, to submit the schematic design to the Massachusetts School Building Authority on behalf of the Nishoba Regional School District no later than June 27th, 2023.
I'll second that. What discussion might we have? Just throw up the golden hand so that you'll pop to the front of the screen here. All right, seeing none, we will move to a vote. And I'll start with Joe.
Yes.
Jackie. Shondor.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
And Amy Cohen?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to our design team for being here tonight and moving this really important milestone forward. Uh, let's see. So, everybody, as you know, we are going to adjourn now, so that C can work out these minutes, right, C?
No, I have these minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not you, C. You're like, no, no. So that Alita can work out the minutes for us. So we are going to adjourn so that that can be taken care of, and then we'll come back into the meeting, and approving those minutes will be top on our list in meeting two. And so I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's see. Joe?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes. Point of clarification, when are we recommitting?
Yeah, so we are adjourned. Alita, how long do you need?
Five minutes.
All right, everybody, so you could just... Five minutes, fantastic. You all can, if you want to jump off of the Zoom, you can, or you can just mute.
I won't even need, I won't even need five minutes. I'm almost done.
Right. Okay, great. So when you guys hear me squawking on the mic, Alita, if you just turn your camera on when you're ready, and then the rest of us will come back. Thanks, everyone. Be back in about four minutes.
Good night.
All set? All right, everybody, when you're ready, come on back. Although I will wait a couple of minutes to give you a sec if you need it. Oh my gosh, my family is all about tonight. And I'm not my normal cave, so they might be part of the meeting. Sorry, guys, I'm just trying to find, I'm just going after the motions right now, so hang on. I'm just going to wait for school committee members to turn their camera on, and then we'll get started. Except for you, Amy. Amy Cohen, I know you're not able to, so that's fine.
Hi, I should be able to in a few minutes here, but just transitioning.
Yeah, no worries. That's tough. All right, everybody, so it seems like we have our quorum. Most members are back. All members are back, I think. So we're going to now move into meeting two. Is Nikki here?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, thanks, Nikki. So we'll, she's our recording. So, everybody, let's call to order the special meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. Alita, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is no longer a joint meeting, correct?
Uh, no.
Okay, fantastic. So this is the, a special meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. So I would like to move on to first, the consent agenda. And so I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda of June 15th, 2023, containing the draft meeting minutes of June 7th, 2023, and draft meeting minutes of June 15th, 2023, meeting one.
Do you want me to share my screen?
Of the minutes you just did?
Yep.
It would be great. Thanks, Alita. So obviously, this last piece here is not, we're not in the materials, but they will be. And so we'll just give you a brief moment to look at this. But before I do that, can I have a second on my motion?
A second.
I feel like maybe that was my chorish who got in first?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Alita. And so I'm just going to give you guys a minute to look it over. It's pretty straightforward. And then I'll take discussion. That's it, right, Alita? That's the whole document?
Just the adjournment, and then where you have to certify the votes, and then here's the tally that has to go to the MSBA.
Excellent. All right, anybody have any discussion or questions on the consent agenda motion?
Yes, Madam Chairman?
Please.
Thank you. This is not in regards to the minutes of the meeting we just held, but these, my comments would be pertaining to the minutes of June 7th. In regards to the School Building Committee report, I would ask that the minutes be adjusted to state that Mr. Gleason stated that he anticipates that there may be some relief from the permitting fee amounts. The current minutes read that there will be a slight relief. The Town of Bolton has not yet advised as to whether there'll be any relief at all. So I think the matter, I know, I know the matter is essentially under advisement, so I just ask that the minutes reflect that the Chair of the Building Committee stated that there may be some relief in regards to the permitting fees coming from the Town of Bolton.
All right, I have that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Can I stop sharing? Is everybody done with this?
I think so. So just use your golden hand if you care to jump in. Seeing no further discussion, I'd like to take the vote, and I'm going to start from the bottom this time. So Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yep.
Dana?
Yes, sorry, couldn't unmute.
Got it, thanks. Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Jackie? Jackie, did I, I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And Joe?
Yes.
Excellent. Consent agenda is unanimously passed. Now we're going to move over to the superintendent's report, and Kirk, you can take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the recognition, and thank you to the committee. I do have something from my report tonight that is not in the report, because it's of an urgent matter. As it would happen, you know, we had a series of storms yesterday. Well, in the Town of Stowe, one of those stores, we believe, lightning damaged the well pump for the center school. And so it was repaired today and replaced and fully functioning, so we will be hosting school tomorrow. However, as a precaution, we want to make sure we're going through full cycles at the center school, so we will not have drinkable water tomorrow to give the system time to recycle and refresh. And it is pizza day, so it doesn't require a lot of water to prepare lunch for the students. We'll have bottled water on site. But we are asking center school parents, please send your children to school with full water bottles tomorrow as we navigate through the day. But of course, we do have supplies in the event that somebody doesn't have their water bottle, but asking our folks, folks to do that, and I know Principal Zadlik has already sent an announcement out to that community. Now, on to what is in the document today. We do have quite a bit, a lot of business to do this evening. First of all, in your packet is ABC Update Number Four. It's a report on the highlights of the year, the challenges, and some priorities for next year. I won't go into the detail of all those items in the report. I think one of the highlights, however, is the renovation project is coming along after what was a bit of a delay. That's going to open up, once that area is opened up, it's going to create some revenue opportunities for professional development as a center that they'll be able to drive some revenue, and ABC is very excited about that. So please take the time to review Report Number Four from ABC. And I'll just repeat, we are to report back to our school committees four times a year when we participate in a collaborative for services. The next piece is a school choice update. We have notified families for school choice. In the report, it says 16 school choice applicants have indicated their intent to enroll. We did unfortunately have two of those students pull back their application, so that number should read 14. That happened just this week. And we did have to conduct one lottery. That was at the ninth grade, as we voted to have one additional seat. We had four applicants, of which one of those four applicants withdrew, but that does remain us two applicants. And currently, the enrollment at Nishoba Regional High School is, they anticipated to be 201 students, which is what I believe our graduating class was this year, thereabouts. So we're going to be the same size next year as we're this year, which gives us plenty of room. And later in the evening, I'm asking the committee consider the question to allow us to open up school choice to the parameters we stated in the school choice hearing presentation to open that up to four seats. And we can certainly talk further about that when we get to that agenda item. And next up, I want to take this moment to introduce a guest that is here with us. Madam Chair, this is one of the items that is later in our agenda as well. I want to introduce Ms. Yume Yao. Ms. Yao currently is the Special Education Director in the Queboc School District, a regional school system located near Stirbridge. And we have recently had some conversations, and I'm presenting her to the committee this evening to be our interim pupil personal services director for the 2023-2024 school year. For those of you that are new to the committee, this is one of the positions on the cabinet team that the school committee is charged with approving, as the recommendation is brought forward by the superintendent. And certainly, we had some discussions this week. I'm very excited about Ms. Yao's opportunity to join us. She has many years' experience as a BCBA, working with families both in the school setting and the home setting. So in effect, she was able to develop meaningful and lasting relationships, effective in order to understand what it is we need to do to serve our families the best. In her last two years as the Director of Special Education in her district, honed, refined, and built the skills that are necessary to conduct all the complex business of our pupil personnel services department. So with that, Madam Chair, if you do not object, of course, I would like to recognize Ms. Yume Yao to say a few words to this committee. And what I will say to the committee is, this is not an interview. Rather, this is an opportunity for Ms. Yao to introduce herself and give us a sort of a brief history on her background. So Madam Chair, without objection, Ms. Yao.
Fantastic. Welcome.
Hey, hi. Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to meet everyone on Zoom. As you know, my name's Yume Yao. I'm currently the Director of Student Support Services for Queboc Regional School District. It is a smaller district than Nishoba, so in addition to the director position, I'm also a 504 Coordinator, Out-of-District Coordinator, Year Coordinator, Homeless Liaison, Foster Care Point of Person, contact such and such. This is my 26 years working with students with diverse special needs. I spent my first 10 years in the private school and 16 years in public school districts. I have taken on various roles as a classroom teacher, behavior analyst, educational and behavioral consultant, and a special education director. I have master's degree in education. I have my special education administrator license. In addition to that, as Superintendent Downey mentioned, I'm also awarded Certified Behavior Analyst for 15 years. Over the past 15 years, I have been responsible for overseeing special education programs in those districts, including the current one, and the IEP process and the development. I also supervise special education staff in collaboration with all the building principals. In my current role as a director, the financial responsibility is huge, and I've learned to really to prepare for all the special education budget and the application for federal and state funding. I'm very passionate about what I do with, file students with disabilities, and I'm a very good listener. And with my experience working in school, public school, private school, and home services, I have formed a very good relationship, positive relationship with the students, staff, and families and the community. Um, I read through the whole strategic plan, um, the Shova's uh twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven. I loved the mission statement. It says, together, we inspire and challenge all learners to realize their unique potential and to become active contributors to their community. I mean, this whole plan really inspired my desire to join the Shova community. So I am hoping that I will get an opportunity uh to form a true collaboration with the students, uh families, staff, and the communities. And I hope to achieve the goal with the whole entire group of stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Yao. Um, I would also like to share with this committee that um uh in uh searching Ms. Yao's background, I reached out to her current superintendent, Ms. Marine Benianda. She was the superintendent for the Worcester Public Schools for many, many years and retired and was serving as an interim superintendent uh in the Quaybog School System this past year. And uh just a couple of quotes that I want to share with you, uh, when I had my conversation with her. She said, and I quote, "In my forty-six years in ed-education, Ms. Yao is one of the finest special education directors I've ever worked with." And the second quote that she said in our conversation is, you know, now that I'm retired, I'm an interim assistant superintendent, and if I could take her with me uh to where I land next, I would take her anywhere I go. So I thought those uh two pieces, those two quotes really reflect from a highly regarded and highly respected superintendent, uh, the quality of Ms. Yao's work. And I shared that with the committee tonight. I know we will have some discussions later, uh, but I thank you for the opportunity and and Ms. Yao, I thank you for joining us this evening.
All right, thank you and have a great night. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much for joining us.
All right, thank you.
All right, and Kirk.
And with that, the report is concluded.
So everyone, we are going to be ha- we have two votes later in the agenda on school choice and on the appointment of the interim director of pupil personal services. So um there's going to be lots of time for you to pose questions about those two things later. So if you don't mind, maybe keep questions to the ABC update if you have any. All right. So not seeing any, we're going to move on now to new business. And it seems our first item here is the Florence Sawyer Camp Sergeant Approval. So Kirk, maybe tee this up or?
Yes, I would like uh to ask Principal Bates to come forward uh for this uh request. Principal Bates.
Thank you very much. Uh, I won't take much of your time. I know it's a busy agenda and evening, and I really appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward to you tonight. Uh, we, our seventh grade uh and uh Mary Rollinson's fifth grade go to Nature's Classroom for students to experience the outdoor learning and team bonding experience. We have not been able to go since the pandemic. Uh, we had the opportunity, we would have been able to go last year, but the site that we have gone to in the past, Nature's Classroom at Sargent Center in New Hampshire uh closed. It was operated by Boston University and they chose to close it. So we had done last year what we'd done previous years in bringing Nature on Wheels onto campus with the intent of scoping, scoo- um, looking at some of the other um opportunities that Nature's Classroom has. And so we've settled on uh Camp Cody, which is in Freedom, New Hampshire. Uh, it's a trip that uh uh would start on the thirty-first of October and end on November third, which is why we accelerated putting it before you now in the hopes that um we could answer any questions you might have.
All right, so thanks, Joel, for that um bit of information there. I think that what I would like to do is put a motion before the committee and then I'll open it up to discussion. So I'm going to move to approve the Florence Sawyer Student Trip to Camp Cody, Freedom, New Hampshire on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three to November third, two thousand and twenty-three with seventy-five students and five chaperones. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, everybody, so do we have any debate, any questions, any discussion? So typically, um, by policy, don't we need? I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn here. Um, I'm looking at the meeting materials in the approval request. You have the chaperones. Never mind. So thank you to them for volunteering. That's fantastic. Any other discussion?
Um, I just, this is Amy. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this back and getting ahead of it and bringing it before the school committee now. I'm assuming that makes it um possible to um let the students like plan with the families ahead of time and help them budget for this as well, so.
Yes, thank you. It also allows us to lock in these dates. It, Camp Cody is a, is a popular destination for Nature's Classroom.
Great. All right, without any further discussion, we're going to go to a vote. So start with Joe.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yeah.
Shondor.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
All right, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, Joel. Our next item on the agenda is uh similar. It is the Mary Rollinson Nature's Classroom Approval. And if you don't mind, I will put a motion before for the committee, just hang on one second. Um, we like to put these in the chat.
Madam Chair, if I may introduce Mr. Blanchard.
Oh, please feel free.
Yes, I'd like to bring forward Assistant Principal, uh, Mr. Scott Blanchard, who is our anticipated principal uh for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year of Mary Rollinson Elementary. And uh, Mr. Blanchard.
Uh, thank you, Superintendent Downing. Thank you uh to the school committee for uh um letting me bring this forward uh for you to consider. Um, it's a great trip we take to Nature's Classroom every year. Um, we're planning on going uh from October second to October sixth in the fall. And uh it's a, not only a great learning experience for the kids, but it's also a great community building opportunity as we have uh staff from the school that go as chaperones, but we also involve members of the Lancaster Police Department who have come with us the last few times we've gone. Um, and um, so there's educational benefits there, there's community ben- building benefits and um also the, the impact it has on the students', uh, confidence, um, self-efficacy and uh independence.
Fantastic. Um, so I will move to approve the Mary Rollinson ES Student Trip to Nature's Classroom in Ocean Park, Maine on October second, two thousand and twenty-three to October sixth, two thousand and twenty-three with sixty-five students and nine chaperones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion? All right, so I'm going to be the guy who asks the question. Um, we have two of our schools doing this and Stowe is continuing to not do it?
Yes, that has not been pro- brought forward by the center school at this time.
Okay, so this is, I think, one of the items that we talked about. I mean, this is a pretty significant experience for two of the communities. And do you imagine that it's, I know that Center School, um, uh, we had our principal leave and we have fantastic leadership there now, but uh perhaps that's playing a role, I'm not sure. But um, is this something that Center School can, that Stowe, Ja- I know that it just seems odd to me that this is something we wouldn't do and the other two towns do.
Uh, I would be careful to commit them to that this evening, but I do know as part of our strategic work that these key items are things that we're looking for in the school. And I look to build the capacity of um our educators and community in the town of Stowe to bring that forward to the committee in the future, as I think uh we would agree with you that that would be desirable as well.
Okay.
And that is something we were able to achieve this year with our Washington D.C. trips. And so we look forward to that as well.
Right. Okay, well, I certainly wouldn't say no to one town doing it because my town doesn't get to. But I would really hope that that, I just want to put it on the record, I really, really hope that you could make that happen for Stowe, because I don't think that in my experience we ever have, but the other towns have regularly, so that's it. Anything else? All right, let's take the vote. Amy Vessels. Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Scott?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone. And thank you to Mr. Blanchard and to Mr. Bates. Appreciate it, gentlemen. All right, everybody, on to our next trip approval. Man, we're on a roll right now. This is terrific. So many good things happening for our kids. Uh, the uh Neshoba Regional High School Robotics Team has a trip that they are also looking to get some early approval for. So I'll turn it to you, Kirk.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to bring forward Mr. Al Fortiani, our robotics coach uh for the Neshoba Regional High School students. This is really exciting. I want to report to the committee is, is you know, our robotics team was before us earlier this year. Uh, and they uh experienced great success at the Nationals with, with uh success breeds attention. And it was just in recent days that uh our team was invited uh to a prestigious event at the beginning of next school year, which is why we had urgency in getting this item on the agenda. So with that context, I would like to turn it over to uh Mr. Fortiani.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? I hope everybody can. So at World Championships, we were in the same division. Um, the World Championships is divided into many divisions. We're in the same division as the Cheesy Poofs, Team Two Fifty-four. Uh, in the world of first robotics, the Cheesy Poofs are the Yankees, the Celtics, the Montreal Canadiens, and you know, King Kong, all rolled into one. And so being in their division, they um, you know, scouted us heavily and we kind of came to their attention as a decent team. Every year they run an invitational at the end of September. They invite teams to come, they invite the best teams in the world to come to their best team invitational. And by miracle, we got invited. It's sort of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, although, you know, if it happened again, you don't be twice in a lifetime, but it would be okay. So I mean, we're all, i- if you follow this thing, to be invited to the Cheesy Poofs Invitational is is the holy grail of high school robotics. So we'd like to go and we, we filled out the paperwork to the best of our abilities um with our logistical plan, which is still a little bit skeleton, but um not too complicated. The venue's two miles from the airport, so a- and there's a lot of hotels at the airport. So in a lot of ways, logistics are simplified compared to other trips that we've made. I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide whatever information I can.
Um, that.
Leah froze.
I think Leah just froze. And dropped off. Amy, you there? Are you there?
I am, and I just got home, so that works out well. Um, so I, it looked like there was a hand up. If you give me a minute, I was just going to log in from my computer and it'll be much easier for me to take over the meeting.
There's three hands up.
I think Shondor stood up first.
Okay, so let's let Shondor talk while I'm logging on to my computer from home.
Amy, I'm back.
Okay.
I got the notification that my internet was unstable and then I got kicked out, so, so sorry, Al. That was um.
No worries.
Um, okay, so uh I'm fairly certain that uh you guys perhaps saw the motion that I copied in um and before my Zoom kicked out. Did I not? Maybe not, but that's okay. I have it right here. So I'm going to move to approve the NRHS Robotics Trip to the Cheesy Champs FRC Invitational in San Jose, California, September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three to October second, two thousand and twenty-three for twelve students and five chaperones. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, all right, so I cannot see you guys, but if you have discussion, just jump in. Questions?
Um, I'll jump in. Um, I recall from the last time uh you were here, you did fundraising to help offset the cost of the trip. Is that also happening here? Looks like this is actually a much more affordable trip.
Yes, um, so I'm going to hit up our alumni for this. So if you're involved in the, in the first world and in knowing that we have an invitation to Cheesy Champs is um, we'll send some of our alumni into a tizzy. And so while they're in a tizzy, I'm going to try to um extract a few dollars from them. Um, we really, really want not to burden families with costs. On the other hand, this is like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So yes, I'm hoping to fundraise about four thousand dollars and have the cost per student be around two hundred dollars.
I just wanted to say I appreciate you trying to keep the cost affordable for students and uh doing all this fundraising.
Yeah, I mean, I've told the students, i- if anything that the robotics team does, of course, if someone has a financial issue, all they need to do is, is come, and we make that very clear. And and finances is never an issue for anything that the robot team does.
Great. I see maybe Mike's hand was next.
Uh, yes, Mr. Fortiani, thank you for bringing this uh forward to the school committee. I'm deeply interested in the origins of the name Cheesy Champs.
Oh, well, this is the Cheesy Poofs Team Two Fifty-four. I, I don't really know the origin of their name. So I mean, the FRC community is a very interesting community. History goes back quite a number of years, but the idea is that Dean Kamen went around to all the captains of industry and hit up all these teams, all these captains of industry to sponsor teams. So the Cheesy Poofs are sponsored by Johnson and Johnson. They have twenty um professional engineers that mentor their team, and they're one of the best teams in the world. Our team has me and a couple of my buddies, and we try to compete with them. So the Cheesy Champs comes from the Cheesy Poofs, and it's kind of a weird name, but man, they're good. So the head of the Cheesy Poofs Control Team is a, is the head of Google Robotics Control. So when we go out there, our students are going to be exposed to the absolutely best control team engineers in the world, control leaders in the world, who mentor the Silicon Valley teams. This is, is an absolutely uh opportunity of a lifetime.
That's great.
Awesome. I think Joe is next.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I was just wondering if Mr. Fortiani could explain the um the, uh, excuse me, I'm just looking at here, the uh approval form. Maybe I missed it and I apologize if I did, but yeah, the total cost of the trip is fifty-five hundred and then a cost per student of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, under two hundred is, is my goal. I mean, right now the finances are a little up in the air, honestly, because I don't know how many dollars I'm going to squeeze out of our alumni. If I can squeeze enough dollars, then hopefully the cost will be zero, but you know, we'll see what happens.
But I, I guess my question is, I, I guess I don't understand the form. You're taking twelve students and five chaperones, seventeen people to San Jose, California, and the total cost of the trip is only fifty-five hundred?
The chaperones are all volunteers and they pay their own way. So um, you know, unless we get more money from somewhere. So for instance, I'm going to donate the cost of the actual registration fee as a good faith effort to get alumni to donate. And um, so we're figuring flights are going to be around four hundred round trip. Uh, we usually sleep four to a room, you know, three nights in a hotel. So as, as best as we can, we're going to try to put the robot, take it apart, put it on the plane as excess baggage. So we're trying to really do this on a stripped-down uh cost basis. I hope I answered your question.
I'm not trying to say you get twelve, you're taking twelve students to California.
And well, four hundred bucks apiece is, is the um, is the airfare, that's forty-eight hundred. And then they split. And then they split the hotel room, three hundred dollars a night. I mean, a hundred dollars a night, they split it four ways for three nights. So when you do the math, it's, it's actually fairly affordable. Again, the venue is very close to the airport, so there's a lot of uh, low-cost lodging um, options. So we're, we're in good shape with lodging, and right now, we're, we're pretty ahead of the game, and flying to San Jose is around right now, four hundred dollars. Round trip, really not bad.
Sounds like an amazing opportunity for our students. And thank you for, for uh, bringing this to us.
Yeah, I have to agree. This is fantastic and super proud of all of your hard work and so grateful to all of you, Al. I know that you're the head of it. I'm sure that there are other people who are helping you, but um, I'd put you up against twenty uh, Silicon Valley uh, engineers anytime. All right, guys, any other discussion? I don't see any other golden hands. Let's take a vote. Uh, let's go to Joe first.
Sure, yes.
And Jackie.
Yes.
And Shondor.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Scott.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
And Amy Vessels.
Yes.
All right, so congrats on that approval, Al, and uh, good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, everybody. So let's move on to um, our next topic, and that is the School Choice Amendment Vote. And Amy Cohen, can you do me a favor and take over for a minute? Because um, just got to go do something, I'll be right back.
Yeah, sure. Um, okay, so we have um, a motion. I'm gonna put a motion on the table for discussion. Um, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation that a total of four schools' choice seats be open for the ninth grade for the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four academic year. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion or Kirk, do you need to add any further explanation of of why we need to take a motion?
I think I've stressed it in the report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Uh, Scott, I see your hand up.
I think Sharon beat me to the punch.
Okay, Sharon.
It's okay, Scott, go ahead.
I'm just trying to understand how this differs from the proposal recommendation that we um, viewed a couple of months ago.
Uh, it's not different, Mr. Powell. That was based on an estimated enrollment. We thought we could be as high as two hundred nineteen students, which is why we had it capped at one. And the actual enrollment has come in at two hundred one students at this time. So that gives us the space to go to what our grade level cap was, and we said no more than four at a grade level at the high school. So it, it brings the ninth grade congruent with the other grades that were already approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and um, now we can go to Sharon.
Actually, my question was just answered, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mike, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, question to Superintendent Downing. I know that there's no crystal ball here, um, but between now and the outset of the year, we could have an influx of uh, new students that are new to the district. Are we able to project the approximate number, how often uh, or, or how many students do come in in the, in the next couple of months uh, prior to each school year?
Yeah, you know, it's never an exact game, but what I can tell you is there, we don't have a lot of real estate uh, inventory in our three towns right now, so I do not anticipate a lot of move-ins with our families that would impact our enrollment in that way. Um, and we would have to have a significant amount of move-ins uh, for us to acquire, say, at the high school, fifteen more freshmen coming in. Uh, that's, that's more, that would be more than what we would anticipate per class for the recent Lancaster zoning development when it's in full um, development years and years from now. So uh, we can withhold this, there's no threat.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I see Dana has her hand up.
Yes. Hi, Superintendent Downing, I was just wondering, has, have everyone already decided if they're going to Minuteman versus Neshoba at this point of time? And is that something that would change over the summer?
Yeah. Uh, Mrs. Ellis, that's a great question, and you have actually pointed to the explanation of why the original estimate came in around two hundred nineteen students, where it's two hundred one, because it's figuring out, you know, who ultimately decides to go to Minuteman based on those things. And so, yes, all of that has been washed.
Okay, I see that our chairperson is back in the meeting. Leah, would you like me to hand it back over to you to take?
Yeah, thanks, Amy, that's, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm back. Uh, so any other discussion, anyone? Not seeing any. Um, Amy, you already made the motion?
Yes, it was made and seconded.
Awesome, thank you. All right, guys, so we're gonna go to take the vote, and I'm gonna start with Amy Vessels first.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sharon.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Jackie. Did I miss that Jackie?
Um, yes, I said, sorry, I don't know if there's a delay, sorry.
Okay, good, no worries. And Joe.
Yes.
All right, everybody, so we have that School Choice Amendment done. And that's that. Let's move now to our next item here, and that is the I Decide Grant. And perhaps, oh, thank you, Alita, for putting the motion into the chat.
We can bring forward Mr. Walt Karen for this one, Madam Chair.
Yeah, real explanation, thank you.
Hi, thank you, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to present to you this evening and an opportunity for our uh, staff of the high school to further support the work that's been done uh, regarding the I Decide program. At the September twenty-eighth school committee meeting, the I Decide program was presented uh, as the high school was just initiating its work with Mass General Hospital, the Department of Public Health, and the Institute for Health and Recovery on this diversion program. During this past year, two of our high school staff have spearheaded this work that aims to provide students that are experimenting with substances and/or who are discovered using substances at school with opportunities to strengthen their knowledge, skills, and motivation to make healthier decisions. While the initial participation in this program was not presented to the district as a grant, our staff have become eligible for a stipend through Mass General Hospital for their participation as leaders of this initiative. In order for our district to best account for the receipt of a five thousand dollar uh, stipends, and then sub- subsequently, excuse me, subsequently pay the stipends to the staff that are doing the work, we are requesting the committee accept this funding as a grant this evening. In speaking with Dr. Boynton regarding the program, we believe an implementation update presented in the fall uh, would be helpful to further understand the success of this program. Uh, again, I would reiterate, at the get-go of the, the pilot, uh, the stipend information was not available, and as it became available at the end of the spring here, um, we were clarifying whether that would be directly sent to staff, or this would be something that the district would be receiving, and we did receive a check from Mass General Hospital and before uh, bringing that onto our books and paying the stipends across the two different years, we were asking uh, for that to be accepted as a grant this evening.
All right, thanks, Ross. So I'm gonna move to accept the I Decide Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars for expenditure as presented in accordance with the school committee policy DD. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thanks, Amy. Uh, any discussion? I do not see any golden, oh, I see Mike's hand. Go ahead, Mike.
Just real quick, not even a question, I just want to say that I really appreciate these grant templates. I think that if, if we see these on a regular basis, it just brings so much more structure and clarity to these grants as they come in, who's gonna use them, um, how they're gonna be used, over what time period. I just really appreciate these forms, so thank you for bringing this up.
You're very welcome.
Any further discussion? All right, I am not seeing any. And so I'll take the vote. Joe.
Yes.
Jackie. Shondor.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
And Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, okay, everyone, so that uh, that's one more grant in the Neshoba column. So thank you so much, guys, for bringing that to Neshoba. All right, so the next item here on uh, on the Agenda for New Business is the Dear J DEIB Discussion. So I think that you guys perhaps remember that last, at our last meeting, uh, Dear J came to visit us and um, communicated with us through public comment a um, proclamation that is in support of our LGBTQ plus community, and they're hoping to work with us over the course of the next several months culminating at our workshop to help us bring forth our own kind of proclamation in support of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in the Neshoba Public Schools. So we had at first thought this is something that we could have a discussion on tonight with Dear J members, but honestly, because the meeting got bumped a week earlier, there really just wasn't enough time for our advisory to um, kind of appear in a meaningful way. And so I'm just wanting to bring this to you all, and maybe Sharon, you can jump in too as our liaison too, Dear J. I'm bringing it to you all to ask your permission or kind of get your approval that this is something that we bring to the workshop in August. And actually, perhaps invite Dear J to join us at the workshop to discuss how we can dovetail the strategic plans um, elements of DEI and with our own goal setting. And so Sharon, do you want to add anything to that? Because I know that you've been meeting with Dear J.
Um, so yeah, I think that what Dear J has asked us to do, um, and I think, Leah, what you're bringing forward as a suggestion is that we make a statement um, supporting our LGBTQ community and um, I can't think of the right word right now, but um, just making a statement that says we support our community and we do, we do not um, allow, we want our community to feel supported and safe, and we will not allow them to be um, hurt through um, the actions of, or we will do our best to not allow them to be hurt through the actions of, of bad actors. Um, and I, I think what Dear J i- i- is the message that Dear J wants to, us to think about is that um, making a proactive, trying to make a proactive statement and have a plan in place so that if events happen, um, we have a way to respond that is not a reaction to the event, but that is a plan. You know, this is what we do when something happens, um, and that we should, we need to really be clear about standing by our vision statements of um, a sense of belonging for all, and that everyone is a part of this community, and everyone is safe, and everyone is included. Um, so those are the, my takeaways from the conversation with um, Dear J. Um, that they are hoping that we will make a statement to support.
So uh, the Neshoba School Committee has a history of doing this. We have several um, support statements that we have constructed over time, and I know that part of our goal setting is related to DEI work. We also have the Equity Audit that is part of the strategic plan. So I thought that it would be best to use the workshop as a time where we kind of pull all of these things together and craft our own version of this statement. And so is everybody, can I just get a thumbs up if you guys are okay with that and, and just like pushing it to the workshop? And frankly, it, um, if anybody has any questions or needs clarification, please jump in and uh, feel free to ask.
Add one more thing.
Please.
I think that Dear J sent the letter that they had read to us at last week's meeting to everyone um, either last night or this morning, so everyone should have a copy of that letter. And the um, there's also resources that as a part of that letter and um, some links to some research that they had done. Some of that, those articles are um, they, behind a paywall, and so the message was that if you want to look at some of those articles and you have difficulty getting to them, let um, Laurie know, because I think they may have access to them um, so that they might be able to get them in another way. Um, and Alita, could you put this letter as part of the meeting materials? Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon, that's truly important. Um, okay, so I did see um, at least a majority, if not all of us, saying that this is the kind of work that we want to do at the workshop. And so that is where we will put it. Uh, oh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, just a, a, a suggestion, and I, I'd probably direct my comments through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Pock, that um, let me put my hand down, that's sort of annoying, sorry about that. Um, some very recent and uh, interesting events have taken place in this area over the last couple of days. And I would just request that the DRJ at least be mindful of what may be coming down from the Federal District Court in regards to Nichols, Nichols Middle School, uh, Nichols Middle School in Middleborough. Um, I think we want to make, take a measured approach in regards to what it is that we may be doing in August. Uh, I have a suspicion that, that the, the district may be aggrieved by the decision coming down from the Federal District Court, but I think that'll be played out during the summer. But I would just ask that DRJ keep uh, aware of what's going on in Boston in regards to this particular matter.
Thanks, Joe. That's good information. Any other comments or questions? All right, so as always, your chair and vice chair will um, be crafting uh, the workshop agenda and uh, developing the activities that we'll engage in. Um, but we would love your input, if there's anything that you would like um, to contribute to that planning, um, please let me know, and I can make sure that your ideas are represented. Okay, great. So that's the extent of that, and as always, we're really grateful to Dear J and Sharon as our liaison for keeping us surprised of um, the most recent research and what's developing in um, that kind of, through that lens of the work. Okay, so on the agenda, we have no unfinished business. Yay. And uh, now what we're gonna be doing is moving into executive session. Um, it is important to note that we will be coming back into the regular meeting, so we will leave executive session and come back into the Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting. It says on the agenda eight PM, obviously, we are past that at this point. The executive session could take us um, anywhere from ten to thirty minutes, it's unclear, but we will be coming back uh, for the final element on our agenda here, which is the Unit A Ratification Vote. All right, so uh, Ms. Cohen, can I rely on you perhaps to give us a motion to move into executive session?
Sure. Uh, I move to go into executive session, Session A pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Unit A, and Session B. Session B pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Interim Director of Pupil Personnel Services, executive sessions to include school committee members, Superintendent Downing, Assistant Superintendent Friend, and Director of Finance and Operations, Ross Mulcarren.
Okay, and I do so declare, and therefore I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, I will take the vote to move into executive session. We'll start with Joe.
Yes.
Jackie? John Dor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Scott?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Excellent. So we are in executive session. I would just ask Nikki to stop recording.
Okay. Alright everybody, uh we are reconvening. Well is Nikki with us?
Yep.
Yes. Awesome. Thanks Nikki. Timely as usual.
Alright everybody, we are reconvening, well is Nikki with us?
Yep.
Yes. Awesome, thanks Nikki, timely as usual. We are going to reopen the regular session of the Nishoba Regional School Committee meeting. Welcome back everybody from Executive, we just were in executive session and now we're back in regular session. So the next item on our agenda in the regular session, we have two more items here. The first one is to ratify the Unit A agreement between the school committee and the association. And Amy Cohen, I turn to you for a motion.
Yes, I move to ratify the Unit A agreement between the Nishoba Regional School District Committee and the Nishoba Regional Education Association for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026, as detailed in the memorandum of agreement.
I will second that. Do we have any discussion? The one thing that I would like to say is to thank the team who worked so hard to bring this through to fruition and to thank the association for all of their hard work in doing so many good things for kids. It was really present and at the front of the conversation how this is really going to help kids. So I'm excited about it. Alright everybody, so if there's no further discussion, we will go to take a, oh Kirk, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, forgive me, but I really wanted to seize this as an opportunity to reach out to all of our educators in Nishoba and let them know how much we appreciate them, how much we care for them, how much we value them. And I think the agreement that we've come into today is reflective of that relationship that we value so much. So thank you to all the Nishoba teachers and thank you especially to the negotiations team. We were able to really, I think, build some great trust and I think this is a great opportunity to move forward.
Thanks Kirk. Alright everybody, so we can vote on the motion. I will start with Joe.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous, thank you everyone. Alright, the next and final item on our agenda is the appointment of an interim director of Pupil Personnel Services. And I would like to throw it back to Amy one more time for a motion.
Okay, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Ms. Yumei Yao as the interim director of Pupil Personnel Services for the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Kirk?
Madam Chair, thank you to the committee for taking this vote up tonight. As I would like to express to all of you, there was one other element that I did talk to Ms. Yao's current superintendent about, and that is family relationships. And she unsolicited said to me, her greatest strength is working in with families and in building partnerships and listening to families and helping find those mutual agreeable solutions. And when I asked Ms. Yao about her superintendent's comments, she really explained it well that in the course of her professional career, particularly working with families in their homes through her work as a BCBA and in the school setting, it really helped refine and build those listening and empathetic skills. So I didn't say that earlier and I wanted to use this moment to make sure the public out there knew that information. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair, for the consideration.
Great. Alright, not seeing any other discussion, I'd like to take the vote, start from the bottom this time. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Dana.
Yes.
And Scott.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
And Joe.
Yes.
So that is unanimous and I'll hand it back over to you Kirk, perhaps?
Thank you so much.
Yes, congratulations Ms. Yao. And at this point, I'll let the committee know that we will enter into contract negotiations now and make sure we finalize those things. Once that's finalized, we will, Ms. Hanigan will be sending out a press release announcing Ms. Yao being on board with us. So congratulations and I look forward to speaking with you tomorrow.
Sure, thank you so much. I really, really appreciate all your support and gave me this opportunity to work with all of you in upcoming school years to achieve our goals and objectives. Thank you. I'm so excited.
Thank you so much. Alright everyone, so with no future agenda items and with no future, well we have a meeting in August, it'll be a special meeting, we'll give you some updates on that for the MSBA things. Really the next substantive business meeting, or not business meeting, but next substantive meeting we have will be the workshop. So you guys can put that in your calendar, get ready for that. Let Amy and I know if there's anything that we should include in our thinking as we begin to plan that. I'd also ask that the subcommittee survey, if you have not already done that, do that. And that's it. So I, if everybody's okay, I'm going to move to adjourn.
So move, second.
I think I'm going to give it to Amy Cohen because I didn't hear who else chimed in. So Amy seconds that motion and here we go down the list, Joe.
Yes.
Jackie. Got it. Shondor.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Scott.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
And Amy Vessels.